Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance, steer your flag.
Steer your flag. United States of America, we do not govern or wish to stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
With approval, the Journal of the Meeting, March 22, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid openings. Move to Communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive file and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Same.
To order.
Item number three, Sixth District.
The same.
To order.
Mr. Chair, moving on to road and bridge matters. Item number one, Seventh District.
Receive file, plan, specifications and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended and a copy of this report to be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Other communications?
Under other communications, item number one, First District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number two, Second District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number three, Second District.
Hold. To order.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Receive file and hold on the order of business.
To order.
Item number five, Seventh District.
Receive file and a change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number six, Fifth District.
See file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number seven, First District.
Same motion through item number eight.
To order.
Item number nine, all districts.
See file and refer to the Director of Department of Planning for review and response, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, Fifth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number 11.
See file and the county councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 12, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, First District.
Same motion through item number 14.
To order.
Item number 15, Sixth District.
See file and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
To order.
Item number 16, Second District.
Same motion.
To order.
Item number 17, Fourth and Sixth Districts.
Receive file, contract an amount not to exceed $1,905,625.73 be approved and awarded to M&amp;H Concrete Contractors Incorporated to lower the response bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number 18, First District.
Receive file and contract an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 be approved and awarded to Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number 19.
Receive file and the matter be held on the order of business and referred to the council as a committee to hold, and that will be the order.
Item number 20, all districts.
Receiving file, and that will be the order.
We have no add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair.
County Executive?
Nothing further this evening.
Thank you, sir. No special committee reports. We'll move to the public forum. Please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
First speaker this evening is Jim Landry.
How's everyone doing?
Good, thank you.
Good evening.
This is my first time doing this, so just bear with me. My name is Jim Landry. I'm with the Women's Safe House. I'm Director of Development there. It's a pleasure coming here this evening to share with you what we're doing to help children and women that are affected by domestic violence. First of all, I want to thank all of you for supporting Women's Safe House, being a partner, working together to change the lives of children affected by domestic violence. You know, your tagline, "Keeping Kids First," is reflected in our children's program. The children's program is designed to provide supervised play and regular rest counseling and support groups to meet the needs of children exposed to domestic violence. Women's Safe House Children's Program served, on average, 232 children the past two years. Thirty-seven percent of them came from the county. As the agency, we provide the following services, activities: temporary shelter services for battered women and their children; we provide a safe shelter, meals, clothing, personal hygiene, supplies. We have a child development program that helps homeless children find a place to have safe shelter and clothing, and they must be 19 years a nun day. We provide this service with the money that you provide. We have a restment service program that provides the primary giver time to rest and heal so where she can take care of her children. We have a parent education program developed in 2007. This is to prevent child abuse and neglect called PetCAN. PetCAN is based on a behavior management model to reduce the incidence of child abuse and reinforce protective factors for children. We have group sessions that are provided for children residing in shelter, and are used to both educate and reinforce interventions to reduce the risk factor associated with child abuse. We also have a safe date preventive program that teaches teens how to stay out of harm's way. Last year, we came up with the, we didn't create it, but we went to a logic model that they use in the public health system. And what this does is, it helps us to identify what our outcomes and what our impact will be. And just an example of that, when most children come into the Women's Safe House, less than 50% of them trust their peers. Within six weeks of staying in the Safe House and going through our counseling and coaching, 90% of the children would develop positive friendship with peers. We also have found out that 80% of the children would identify a safe place or person in their lives. Most children do not take kindly to strangers when they come from an abused household. They're very fearful, and that's why we decided to use the logic model because it helps us to stay focused on what our mission is. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Schaefer.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. It's good to see all of you, many of whom I've met before, but I would like to give you some information that you may already know but maybe need updated on, and that's we're all getting older. It's something we do not escape. My business is being the Executive Director of Mid East Area Agency on Aging, and we provide services for seniors age 60 and older in St. Louis County, Jefferson, Franklin, and St. Charles counties. Our job, our business is booming, as I said, because we are all getting older. And the problem is that although we have more seniors than we've ever had before, we don't have the funding to support the services that exist out there. Our agency provides meals on wheels. We provide over 23,000 meals in the county each month. And those meals will say, it's more than just a meal because it brings a visit to people who are homebound, as well as people gathering together in the senior centers. And as you know, St. Louis County has the highest population of seniors in the state of Missouri. Despite that high population, we've had to close senior centers, particularly in the north St. Louis County area, because of increased costs and inadequate funding. So one of the opportunities you have is the Senior Services Fund that I think you've heard about last week. That gives us the opportunity to provide local resources that can fund senior services that will make a difference in helping people stay in their own homes, which is our target group. We help people remain in their homes as long as possible through services such as transportation, the meals, information and assistance, family caregiver assistance if a person is caring for someone over age 60. We know that there are more seniors than have ever been all around the world, particularly in St. Louis County, and we want to be able to serve those seniors. I would ask you to give consideration to this Seniors Count initiative, the Senior Services Fund, because that can really go a long way to helping people stay in St. Louis County. I know you support the Age Friendly Initiative. That's something that is unique in Missouri.
I had some, I was hoping that they would be here.
I don't believe there's another one in the state.
After listening to their rosy picture that they painted about the Schussler Road development
But we want that to continue to grow through the Senior Services Fund. We want St. Louis County to truly be a place where seniors can live throughout their lifetime
that they were going into, I would like to point out that maybe they're not the paragon
and not have to move away because of lack of services. So I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
of virtue that they say they are.
I appreciate Dr. Page bringing this up, and I hope you'll give careful consideration
The last time, they said that they have all this input from the citizens that live on
because it truly can make a difference to all of us as we're aging.
the road. The only time there was ever a meeting was in August of 2015, and that was not necessarily
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
a meeting.
Sure.
It was them dictating what they were going to do with the plan for the Schussler Road
Where do you get your funding now?
It's state, local, and federal.
And what is your annual budget?
development.
It's right around $9 million.
And when we brought up the question about why they needed to change from R1 to R1A,
And that includes all state, local, and federal?
Yes, yes, and contributions that come from people who receive our services.
the answer was very simple and very straightforward, and probably the only honesty we've gotten
And how long have you been aware of the Seniors Count initiative?
out of them since this whole thing began.
Oh, it's, I've known that that exists, that opportunity exists, for 10, 15 years
They did it because they couldn't make enough money with it.
because there are 41 counties, I believe, and rising, in the state of Missouri that
Now, for your consideration, two years ago, we had come through the same way with the
have already passed the Senior Services Fund.
same situation, and the council rejected the last development plan, and it's exactly
And where they have passed it, they have been able to provide exponentially more services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
the same area with the same type of development, but just, you know, scaled down plan.
Next speaker is Ron Zitniak.
It was rejected, except that their plan is a smaller version of the same thing. You cannot go forward without zoning change from R1 to R1A. It was deemed unacceptable by the council then. It is and should be deemed unacceptable now. Section 1005 dot 150 of the code says that the single-family residential lot design standards, where there is a question as to the suitability of a lot or lots for their intended use due to factors such as rock formation, soil conditions, steepness of terrain, flood conditions, or other adverse natural conditions, the department may, after adequate investigation, withhold approval of such lots until engineering studies are presented to the department which established the method proposed to meet any such conditions is adequate to avoid any danger to the health, life, or lot improvement. This section accurately describes the property for the, all the factors of consideration. Anyone who has seen the site can attest to that. Dave Skares already addressed the problems that he has found on that site with his 30 years of experience. He's credible for that information. His detailed evaluation of the sign, the site plan that was submitted by Pulte illustrated errors in surveying, topography, and other factors that questioned the viability of the Pulte Homes Plan, which can only be described as faulty as best. This section also explains the original wisdom of the zoning. How much?
Your time's up, sir.
Oh, it's too bad. I was only getting started.
Thank you, Ron.
Can I come back later?
Next speaker is David Skares.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to get back up in front and speak again. One, just two short points. One of consideration is that nearly half the homes in this Pulte development are going to be built on film materials. Almost anyone who's ever had a home built on film knows that they're subject to settling, and that there's development of foundation cracks, road problems, ceiling wall problems, and even sink problems within their property boundaries. This has happened in a subdivision on our street right now, Auburn Hole. The second point I'd like to bring up is that in the past 19 years on Schussler Road, I've lived there for 25 years. In the past 19 years on Schussler Road, there have been 12 tear-down homes that were rebuilt. The assessed property value that St. Louis County has on these right now range from $440,000 to almost $1.5 million, but they were built with the integrity of the neighborhood preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Ann Zitniak.
My name is Ann Zitniak, and I live at 12944 Meadow Hill Lane. I've lived there for 54 years. My father built the home when it was nothing but a little more than three acres of a field. He planted all the trees. We've worked the land, and there's a lot of other people that live just the way we live there. My, our children, our child, now has her children there, and we're handing this down generation upon generation. We do a lot of community service. We've got a therapy pony that we allow children to come and ride on. We have Girl Scouts come by, schools come by. We take some of our animals to the Lindbergh Schools, requested by the teachers, and that's enough of that. Just to let you know that we share and love our property. And the road is no different today than it was when we moved there when I was 12 years old. I'm now 66. And it was a dangerous road then. It's a dangerous road now. I went around and collected signatures for the petition, and there are people over on Men's Hill Lane, if you're familiar where Kennelly Road is, excuse me, Notting Hill, Notting, I think it's called Notting Hill. All the people over there were just up in arms over the possibility of the proposal of the change in zoning because they said they're going to be facing the same thing too. There are numerous homes there vacant, land that was vacant because of the elderly people that have passed away, and everything's going up on the market. I received a letter from one of them, an email from one of them, and it said that he would be at the meeting tonight. He was terribly sorry that he couldn't be, and he does live off of Men's Hill Road. But he had to be at a meeting regarding his son at 4:30. So he said he had to make that his priority instead of coming here. He said he can relate to the developers who decide for us who really knows what's the highest and best use of land. This may be another example of someone who really doesn't care about anyone other than themselves. Show us a need for more expansion in the county versus St. Louis City first, then show us a need for more inventory of houses in this specific area, not modification of zoning in this specific area. If those two points are met, then we'll address such, which specific area best meets the need of this area in general to allow additional housing. They're putting the cart before the horse. I've never had one person in any of that area by St. Anthony's Hospital, which all deliveries, by the way, for the hospital are made on Schussler Road. Schussler Road is a dead-end road, one way in, one way out. And there's all kinds of signs to watch for pedestrians. Cross traffic does not stop. And if any of you have been in that area, you know, just one more thing quickly. There's a 12-year-old girl that does artwork of angels, and on the back it says "Stand Strong," and it's by Anna Louise. She's 12 years old, and she's a survivor of three open-heart surgeries, and she loves drawing angels. She wrote a letter that I was going to copy, and I ran out of time. I don't know if you could copy it.
You give it to Jen.
You give it to Jen, then she can pass it out.
I would like for you to read this letter. Because of the anesthetic that was given to her for these three open-heart surgeries, she's very well-spoken, but she cannot write very well. Her spelling is atrocious, but I would like for you to try to make out what she had to say. And this girl's my granddaughter, and she loves the farm she lives on too. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ann.
Next is Patricia Ann Smith.
There was a screen out that I could place the photos on to show the entire county council, the flash flooding that is going on on my own property on Schussler Road. Unbeknownst to Pulte, when they first purchased the whole plot, or, you know, potentially purchased it, there are actually two flash flood channels on this one piece of property. It's, you know, contiguous. It's all joined together. Mr. Gerber lives and is impacted by the back run, which comes from around the YMCA across the back of the property onto his and his neighbor's area. The other comes down the street. And I have the photos to prove it, as I've shown in the pre-meeting here. And so I'm going to leave these with you tonight. Please be sure you see them. Some, the first ones are more effective than the last ones, but they're all important. And I actually own, all the properties on the near side of the photo, I'm a co-owner of it. And so I was very shocked. This occurred not this past winter, but the spring prior. And I had been out of town for a number of years. While I was gone, unbeknownst to me, St. Anthony's overdeveloped on its own property without any of us being told practically. And then they built a second medical building, and then the Y expanded. And more parking lots, more parking lots, some that are unnecessary totally, which is addressed in these reports we should be getting. These are, I would like to say, please, they are a must-read. I know I don't usually ask that, but the first one is one set of report there, and then the second one contains a double, and then there's my bio so that you know who I am. I think some of you are familiar with my work priorly. So these are revisions of the past thing that had been put forth for the Planning Commission, but they're updated as well. So these will be left with Ms. Frank or Executive Frank. I'd like to read you the poem that Pulte inspired me to write. It does get a little facetious in the middle, but it has a good message, and so I hope you will understand it. I know you will. This is "No Rape and Run," and it's addressed to any construction company who in the past performed overdevelopment and overconstruction. Construction can't be just a rape and run, a quick attack and a quick ending of what you've begun, without any responsibility for the quality of your construction. Then it's off to despoil the next neighborhood? Is that your idea of doing good? Or is that your warped concept of fun? Trying to ruin homeowners' lives and life investments? Ah, 'tis a wicked web you've spun. Your presentations were filled with bragging and some deceptions. What tales you concocted and begun? Less than two years from conception to completion? I don't see any need for speed and the Olympic timers gun. Is it your creditors that you're hoping to outrun? You shouldn't attempt to circumvent current zoning to get more bushels of bucks, even if you could. Please consider our rain runoff and flash flooding problems. We certainly wish you would. We didn't expect another brazen attack à la Attila the Hun. Your frivolous, unconcerned approach in presenting this travesty did both anger and stun. We've been repeatedly attacked in the past, and with that, we wish to be touched.
Next three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, is that it? Well, you'll have your packet. You can read the rest of it.
Thank you very much.
I call on them to join the International Brotherhood of Ecological and Environmental People. Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Gerber.
My name is John Gerber, and I live in the far end, close to the Merrimack River of Schussler Road. We've lived there for 42 years now. Ralph Gerber, who may speak to you sometime, lives immediately adjacent. We are not relatives. But at any rate, we turned in 220 signatures against this proposal to the Planning Commission Somehow, it didn't make it to the Planning Commission Board. There was a vote taken here of the people who were there at the time, which there was about five more votes for the proposal than there were against it. The difference was that, I think it was 37 for, against the proposal, every one of them lived on Schussler Road. The others, there was not a single one that would not benefit financially from this going through. The Planning Commission staff admitted that they knew that, but those numbers did go to the board. So it's very discouraging. These 368 people, I went around and collected a lot of these, and these people are not just disappointed, they're just plain mad. They can't believe, well, you can believe it when you see what's happening to one of our presidential candidates and how he's getting the votes, or people that just can't trust government. They'd like to hope, but they felt I was naive when I said, "No, our council will not let something like this go through. It's against almost every single zoning rule." And we can share those rules with you if you want. You probably know them. They have to make an exception to every one of those rules in order to put this through. 368 people, every single one of them above 18, wants this to not go through. It is used, they even use Butler Hill as a precedent. They say, "Oh, this won't be a precedent." But they use even lots on Butler Hill Road that are joined in the back of this with about a seven-acre split between this and the new program as a reason why this should be there. We'd like to truly believe that we have a part of government here in the county that is going to do what your law says and what all of the neighbors want. So I appreciate it very much. If you have any questions? I didn't think so. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
That was the final speaker, Mr. Chair.
Introduction of bills.
Bill number 71, introduced by Councilmember Page, in ordinance appropriating and setting apart $1,331,094 from the unappropriated bounds of the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund for support of debt service payments on the serious 2016 AV SACR complex special obligation fund. Bill number 72, introduced by Councilmembers Page, O'Mara, Dolan, and O'Leary, in ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in St. Louis County, Missouri on the 8th day of November 2016, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of St. Louis County a proposal for St. Louis County to levy and collect a property tax of five cents for each $100 of assessed valuation for the purpose of providing services to persons age 60 or older. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara.
Oh, please. That'd be your order.
All right. Bill number 66, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number 66.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Bill number 66 is perfected.
Bill number 67, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 67.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Bill number 67 is perfected.
Bill number 68, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 68.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Bill number 68 is perfected.
Bill number 69, introduced by Councilmembers O'Mara, Page, and Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 69.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Bill number 69 is perfected.
Bill number 70, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect Bill number 70.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries. Bill number 70 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold Bill number 116. To order.
Bill number 51, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move the final passage of Bill number 51.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
All right. Bill number sixty-six, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect bill number sixty-six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number sixty-six is perfected.
Bill number sixty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number sixty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number sixty-seven is perfected.
Bill number sixty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number sixty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number sixty-eight is perfected.
Bill number sixty-nine, introduced by Councilmembers O'Meara, Page, and Harder.
I move to perfect bill number sixty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number sixty-nine is perfected.
Bill number seventy, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect bill number seventy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I have a motion carries, bill number seventy is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold bill number one sixteen. It's ordered.
Bill number fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move the final passage of bill number fifty-one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number fifty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number fifty-one is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-one, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move final passage, bill number sixty-one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number sixty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-one is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-two, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move the final passage, bill number sixty-two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number sixty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-two is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-three, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move final passage, bill number sixty-three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number sixty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-three is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-four, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move final passage, bill number sixty-four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number sixty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-four is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-five, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move the final passage, bill number sixty-five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number sixty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-five is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, we have three this evening, Mr. Chair. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for adoption, resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of resolution number two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.